That's how bad we were.
All right, welcome everybody. Another beautiful day in Perry, Oklahoma. Regular meeting for the City Council of Perry, April 1st, 2024. Have a roll call.
Okay, Coffee.
Dear.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Cold Iron.
Here.
Rubbs.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Worthen.
Here. All right, we've got Corin. I've asked Gloria on to the location for us.
Father, we're just so thankful that we could gather tonight in your name to do the work for this city. We're thankful for today, thankful for the rain, thankful for the sunshine. Thank you many times that you've protected Perry from storms and bad weather. And we just ask for your protection again tonight. Father, we're just so thankful to have our new city manager on board tonight. We just pray that you will just bless him and each one of us as we serve and continue to serve. We just pray now that you will just close this meeting and help us to make all our decisions in your name and that we'll glorify you. Jesus, in my prayer. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Corin. All right, item one, our consent agenda. Questions or comments on that?
Question to the consent agenda.
Okay.
See.
Do we need to see?
Okay, yes, we will need to remove item C from that. Because we have instructed Nate to work with Stillwater Medical to look into that a little bit more. So we would need to approve items A and B and then hold off on C.
Motion to approve items 1A and 1B for the consent agenda.
Okay. Motion, second. Roll call when you're ready.
Coffee.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rubbs.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthen.
Yes. All right, item two. Item's removed from consent agenda for discussion. Yeah, just like I said in our previous meeting that we just had, PFA Holdings. We instructed Nate to meet with Stillwater Medical to look into the surplus, what it is, a little more in the inventory and pricing on that. So they'll be researching that for us and have that back next month after we meet for PFA Holdings again.
Okay, Coffee.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rubbs.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
I mean, yes as well.
Worthen.
All right, that covers item three. We will go to item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to items on the city agenda. Ms. Rose, did you have something for us?
I had to put the city attorney. He helped me a couple of weeks ago with a sewer problem. The people were wanting to pour through my yard instead of going around. And he got them to do that. And I was just going to tell you, you might have somebody check it in the morning because that sewer line collapses. The pipe is not, the holes around it are. And that is on city property, so you might want to check that.
What's the address again?
705 Crust Street.
Okay, perfect. Nate, can we follow up on that?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Rose.
Thank you.
That's apparently the man driving in.
Yes.
All right, item five, proclamations, commendations, reports, and inquiries by the governing body. I don't believe we have any proclamations or commendations. Go through the council reports here. Word one. You guys got anything for us?
I would just like to say that my daughter was the first person in Noble County to graduate from drug court, Noble County Drug Court today. And I'm very proud of her accomplishment. It was a very, very tough program. And I know that District Attorney Ron Hermanson, that's his baby, and he just feels really good about it. And a great turnout, and it was just a wonderful graduation ceremony. And also I want to say that, you know, we had the attorney general here the other night, and the city council was well represented, and he gave a really good talk. And it was kind of an honor to have him in Perry.
Excellent. Thank you, Corin. Scott, anything?
I've got one, but I think I'm going to wait until we get to the committees.
Okay. All right, word two.
There's more fitting.
Joe?
No, don't have anything.
Okay, word three. Randy, do you know?
I had a concerned citizen talk to me about parking in the street up at the Fairway Edition. And after I visited with that individual, I did drive up there. Those streets are fairly narrow. I just was curious. Maybe need to educate myself on kind of what is the policy of parking in the street in Perry? Do we have some streets? Where are some regulations or?
Don't know. Brian, do you know?
No, unless it's posted, not park anywhere. I mean, as long as they're not reflecting or blocking a mailbox, it's kind of open game. But if it's a traffic hazard, they just need to call us and let's go up there and evaluate it. But unless it's posted, we really can't enforce it, so.
Okay.
We do have a few places that's posted.
Right.
Not in that neighborhood.
Did you say that's a new area, a new development?
It's not brand new.
Probably the newest.
Yeah, I was gonna say, for Perry, it's where, but.
I think we can put requirements, you know, going forward on how wide we want developments to be.
Oh, I think we probably, I was kind of shocked driving up there that when there is a car parked in on the street, it picks up the entire lane, you've got to. For newer neighborhood, those streets are very narrow.
Right. And that's been brought up in the past with the school area, right? On Locust or?
Yeah.
In the past, that's been brought up.
Remember one time when someone, I don't know who built the Fairway thing, but there has been people that have built it and not pay attention to the.
Was it not city limits before it was built? And then reacquired later, after it was built?
We had to go in and spend a lot of money replacing those roads up there as they fell apart. You remember that?
And we did put some criteria in for any new developments.
Right.
You might want to evaluate that and see if we need to do more. On streets and things, we require certain specifications to be able to be annexed and things like that. Couple years ago.
Sorry, I don't know what's going on there.
That's just the tornado warning.
Must be a tornado.
Yeah, I'm sure it is. My limit on speaking.
You're done. No more.
That's your timer.
All right. Well, word four. Sam, Derek?
Well, I had somebody reach out about rainwater, but I think that's what you're going to talk about, so I'll let you know.
Okay. All right. With that, let's jump over to committee reports and let's start with that.
So the tire addition, the Hueserill, Hueserill addition, is all right. So we've done quite a bit of work up there. Obviously, we just had a rain a little bit ago and it closed to an inch in like 30 minutes or something like that. So a lot of rain really quickly. And where we'd worked on the driveway, it apparently is still crest that we put in the driveway trying to keep that out. And then, but she also sent a video, somebody else had sent her that where we did that work down at the end of it showing the water flowing out of there. It looks like that's working really well for the amount of rain that we got in that amount of time. But we may need to look a little bit further into what we've previously done there and see if there's something else we might be able to do. I mean, hopefully, we don't get rains like that all the time. But she didn't get, she didn't say whether it got in her house or not, but it did crest her driveway, which is what we were trying to keep from happening. So I might need to put two more, look into that a little bit more.
Okay. So we'll have to talk to probably Matthew Coe on that.
I get.
Yeah, take a look at.
I probably need to forward this to Matthew and let him put some evaluation on that.
All right. Take care of our drainage committee. How about the planning, zoning?
We had a good productive meeting. We've discussed historical historic preservation district and actually left Nate with a couple, couple of things to get back with us on the next meeting.
We didn't have a meeting, did we?
I'm sorry?
We didn't have a meeting, did we?
No, I was thinking about that.
Yeah.
Typically, those are two weeks, so.
I can send anybody.
But we, I had attended a meeting and with the historic preservation office, and they brought up the, what is the acronym? Do you recall the acronym, anybody? Something local government.
Can you see it? Try to look it up.
And typically, those are implemented, so we were moving forward with the historic preservation district, but typically, those are implemented side by side together. And so we're going to get more information about that before we move forward with the historic preservation.
Okay.
The acronym you can't think of is usually done in coordination.
Yeah, and what that does is CGF, yeah, Certified Local Government. And that is what, what that will also give us is some opportunity for other funds as well. So it doesn't, really, most of the wording, I think, that we have in the historic preservation ties in and accompanies that very well. But we want to make sure that we do them together so that we have access to those funds for the businesses and things in the historic district, preservation district. So hopefully, we'll move on that.
And for our downtown, we have that through the end of April or through the end of May?
It's in, it's permanent now.
Oh, it's permanent now?
Yeah.
Hospital, I don't believe we have, because they haven't been meeting.
I said I'd meet you, and I didn't have a meeting.
Right, I don't think they have.
So who, who drives those meetings?
Yeah, we talked about that in our PFA Holdings committee. Nate's going to be talking to Stillwater Medical about having Courtney or Stephen join us in that meeting and then possibly having a quarterly report with the council as well. So hopefully, we're getting some more communication and some more feedback on what's happening with the progress on the hospital.
Because we're trying to get to 90%.
We're still not at 90 last I heard.
Right. I mean, that's our, that's our threshold that we're at right now. We're trying to get to that 90%, right?
About 100.
Right.
So 90% of what?
The plans.
Okay, construction documents?
Yeah.
Y'all get the ball wrong. Put that again.
So a little back, we were having weekly meetings. And a month ago or so, it was kind of ceased. And so that was a part of the previous conversations, trying to make sure that we have a line of communication, however that is.
There was a couple of emails after that, but it was just about cosmetic stuff on the inside and things that they weren't, didn't have answered yet, so.
But we're all getting updates and notes coming, so.
Do we have a, these are the deadlines we have to reach for our funding? So I mean, that everything keeps being funded the way that it is?
So these are not tax exempt issued bonds? So we're not under the same requirements that you're probably thinking about related to our city leases? You know, the, as far as the expenditure funds, it's just capitalized interest on the $5 million that we've, that we had to borrow upfront as part of the financing. So we are paying monthly on that $5 million. We're compounding the interest on that $5 million and not spending that with anything really to show for it. But that's really all that we're out as far as things goes. But timeline wise, you know, as always, the sooner the better. I know getting this stuff rolled up and completed. It kind of, we ran through a period there where it was push, 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 you know, to get the funding, to get the new market tax closes, to get all of those things done. Now we're in the backside of that.
Okay. I'm concerned. We were pushing really hard because there were some deadlines we had to reach. And now it's just kind of stalled.
Right. And those deadlines were really around the borrowing that we needed to do and determining the amount of, was the council going to commit to, you know, this GMP, the guaranteed backbone price numbers at the top yet? We couldn't take the new market tax credits. They had a September deadline, you know, that we had to be closed by. That, all of that was really what, what that press was. This is now just, we need to reactivate the, you know, the urgency in it.
Need to light an engine.
Let's get this.
Well, they have some dates. I was just reading, going back over an email. The April 4th, April 10th was, there's a pre-bid meeting that was scheduled. I don't know if they're gonna, but they'll hit that deadline and then bid opening on the 30th. And then hopefully to present a GMP on the 17th of May. Of May. When do we put a shovel in the ground? That question was asked, but I mean, that's speculation right now. I mean, if you set a date that's, it's raining today. It'll soften the dirt up.
Well, the reason I brought it up is there's lots of concern in the community just around the hospital period. And when we don't have a meeting or a report each week, it just adds to speculation. And I would sure like to see us.
Moving in a direction.
Get something.
Agreed. That's what we talked about in the holdings, same thing. So hopefully have that and have the GMP information. Because we're also up against lead times on equipment and things and.
I'll send an update in the Friday memo this week.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe worse with the bridge falling.
All right, so moving on to item number six, we have our city manager remarks.
I have a few. So a lot of it has been kind of waiting for our journeyer to come back from Japan to give me updates. But I have, so like Stillwater Medical update, you'll see this coming next council meeting. We met about transfers and some of the issues we've seen surrounding that and calling our staff out. You know, all hours of the night, even for what we would consider maybe non-emergencies. So you'll see a policy come through on that. And I'll send that out well before, so you have time to read it and give thoughts. But the idea behind that one is we're hoping that we can come to a consensus with Stillwater Medical of what is considered an emergency. And so that our staff won't get called out for things that don't fall under those emergencies. Yeah, I guess that's a big update there. The railroad pipeline project, the water line going under the railroad, there's an update on that one too. It sounds like the contractor that got the bid on that is, it looks like they're going to bail. We have not heard from them. We've reached out multiple times and it's just radio silence. So that being said, they did put a bond down, so we can get that bond money back for them, bail them on that project, which is a benefit to us. And then we just have to go through the process of bidding and getting someone to kind of do that project. So ultimately, I think it gives us a little more press timewise. But if we play it right, we get money in addition to that because of the bond that they put out. So could be good for us there. The Crow project is another thing you guys, you elected officials, asked me to work on. I've been waiting to meet with Bryce on that, so we'll meet tomorrow and talk through it and set up a meeting with them. And then the historic preservation, Brian and I talked through it a little bit in our last meeting, and we'll have a recommendation on that coming meeting next week. Yeah, absolutely. So yeah, those are kind of the four updates I have currently.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, item seven. Russ?
Don't really have anything specific. You know, getting Nate up to speed is kind of the last one. And, you know, since he hired and just trying to get him in some information and those kind of things. You know, we've met a couple, well, talked a couple of times, met today and went over a whole laundry list. And by the time Bryce meets with him tomorrow, his head may explode with the number of things that he actually has to do that were unloading onto his plate at this point. But I think at the end of the day, you know, once he gets up to speed on all of these, I think it's going to be a great situation for us. So we're looking forward to what, him taking over and working to do a lot of those things. The only big thing that's really coming up on the short term horizon is related to the budget. You know, in kind of getting that in place, we talked about that today. So kind of game plan on how we're going to move forward for now. And then as time changes and as things work, we'll see what works the best and what plays out. And so it's more, we have deadlines and at this point, he's going to have a lot of projects that he's got to take care of, so we just want to make sure the deadlines are made, can be met. You guys are getting what you need on the financial side. So nothing really other than that, we're still waiting on the audit. You know, our issue on the audit is around getting the rest of the outside audit pieces coming in. You know, so we've got to get some of that taken care of, but nothing big on that.
All right.
Can I ask you?
Yes, yes.
Well, we've been on the council a few months. What is the timeframe for budgeting? So timeline on budget, we are under the Municipal Budget Act. So we have certain, the mandatory requirements we have, we have to provide council a budget by June 1st. We have to hold a public hearing by June the 15th, and we have to adopt by June the 23rd. So those are the dates that we have to meet at this point. Now, traditionally, we usually have you all a draft of the budget around the 1st of May. We hold one or two discussion sessions related to it, depending on what Nate may do this year. That's kind of what, what we don't know how we're going to exactly pass some of that down. You know, the, in the charter, it's actually Nate's budget. We're here to assist in whatever Nate needs to make that happen. So we're kind of working through how all that's going to go then as far as presentation, you guys. But you all should have a first round of the budget with request and those kinds of things around the 1st of May. Which will be those 30 days for the actual date you're supposed to receive it and really close to 55 days before it has to be adopted.
And as far as how you would like me to do it, I'm open to feedback. I've seen city managers meet with council members two at a time, so it's not a corner. I've seen, you know, questions just via email, I've seen documents. I mean, however you would like to do it, maybe just let's talk after or even now and just let me know what would work best for council.
And then the audit has to be done before then? No, because, so the audit issue is, is we have, we have the city part, you know, that could be taken care of. It's, we have the building component units that have to be thrown in there and their audit opinions that our auditor doesn't sign. It's really the hospital stuff, you know, so we don't sign. So it just, it creates a laundry list of timing issues. But as far as the audit goes, we're, we're good on numbers related to the audit. I'm not worried about those numbers.
All right. Any other questions? All right, before we jump into item number eight, you said there's a tornado warning.
Uh, not anymore.
Oh, not anymore. Okay. I was gonna say, just for logistics, if we do have to break and leave, which way do we go?
We'll go up this building.
Just out of the, okay. Just so everybody knows, you hear sirens, that's the direction.
It was for Noble County, but it was for southeast Noble County, by course.
Okay. So item number eight, Bryce?
Well, as Nate said, I was gone for half the month. But when I was there, I still was thinking about some Perry work. And tomorrow, we're.
And, uh, tomorrow we're going to, uh, Nate and I are gonna meet and the, and the list of projects to discuss are, are extensive, and a lot of them have, uh, a whole lot of components to them. And so that will be fun, uh, for him tomorrow. You know, I, I worked on economic development, I did, uh, some planning and zoning, uh, I did, uh, I, I got some good contracts, working on, uh, grant funding. Uh, gonna talk about this, don't wanna really talk about it because we don't like to talk about it, but, uh, I, I did wanna tell you that, uh, I'd spoke to Rick Johnson, and Rick Johnson says, I spoke to the mayor about this, and Rick Johnson said, "We could make an application by April 10th for Mazon Trust Funds. He'd like to see in the nature of an economic development grant." I mean, we discussed the fact that the Mazon's have done so much for us in respect to the hospital. And, and I didn't wanna be too pushy or ask for too much, but he did thought, think that if we had a nice economic development, uh, application need, which was tied to some of the projects that we had, that that would be something that would be, that would be considered. So, we're not really supposed to talk about those projects here, just wanted to tell you that that is, that's got an April 10th deadline, so that's coming, that's coming right up. Uh, the 404 permit process, I think you've gotten some information on that. That, that is such good news. I mean, there's gonna be a notice and there's gonna be a public hearing and, of course, anything can go sideways, but at least, uh, that is now directed at a conclusion so that a construction, uh, construction bids can be taken and that project can be done while we still have federal and state funding. Uh, so that's, uh, pretty much, uh, the things that I worked on the half a month that I was here in. Tomorrow I'm going to, uh, we're, we're gonna, uh, sort out some stuff and, and, and really get working. I'm, I'm very excited, very excited about the, the new management team.
Well, welcome back.
Thanks. There's a lot of Japanese people in Japan, I'll just tell you that. And it's not like Hawaii. In Hawaii, there's a lot of Japanese people in Hawaii, but there's just a lot of Japanese people, more than you could even imagine. A mass of humanity. And in Mount Fuji, if you ever get a chance to see that, I mean, that is one of the most awesome sights that I've ever seen.
All right, well, thank you Bryce. Let's move on to item number nine. authorize Nate Reed as signatory on all accounts of the City of Perry and for all financial institutions and for all purposes, including but not limited to the signatory on all negotiable instruments, warrants, checks, and other evidence of indebtedness. Provide any other additions or substitutions, signatories as deemed necessary.
So moved.
Same.
Copy.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
For them.
Yes. He's ready. All right. Item 10. Consider approval of resolution number 2024-03 of the City of Perry, Oklahoma, establishing a fair housing policy for the City of Perry, Oklahoma.
Can I give just a quick background on this one?
Yeah.
Since you asked about a mayor. Um, so this is something we do every year, uh, just so that we can maintain the application for CBTD grants, um, and other federal grants that we need. So, it's, it, it's kind of just routine, I think at this point, but, that's why it's on there.
Motion to approve resolution 2024-03.
Okay. Motion to adjourn second.
Okay, copy.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Porco.
Yes. All right, item 11. Discuss roles of city attorney and CFO and direct action as deemed necessary. So I did ask that we put this on here now that we have, um, a city manager and we've got a full administrative team. I thought it would be a good opportunity for us to kind of talk through those roles. Bryce and Russ have done a lot for us, especially in the interim of having a city manager vacancy, as well as Christie stepping in that role. But with that, just to kind of help show her support and give some direction as to what we expect, um, from each position moving forward. We've given everybody a copy of what's in our charter for, um, our city attorney, for our CFO, and for our city manager. How would you guys like to tackle this? You wanna go through one at a time?
Sure.
All right. Let's start with, uh, let's start with Bryce's, 'cause his is the shortest. Before I gotta start reading a bunch of stuff. And I will, I'll read through some of these, um, also since we're live on TV so that those watching can follow along. But yeah, thank you Rose.
Have a good evening.
Be careful out there.
Very good.
And so in our city charter, our city attorney says, "Appointment and removal of city attorney. The mayor with the consent and approval of a majority of all members of the council shall appoint the city attorney. The city attorney may be removed by majority vote of all members of the city council. Duties of the city attorney. The city attorney shall have such qualifications, powers, and duties as prescribed by law. It shall be the city attorney's duty to advise the council and each member thereof and the city manager upon all legal questions, and the city attorney shall give opinions in writing when requested and shall represent the city as counsel in all litigation in all courts, shall perform such other legal services on behalf of the city, its officers or employees, as may be required by the council. Although the city attorney is appointed by the council, he shall also perform the work as may be directed by the city manager. The foregoing provision that shall not be deemed to prevent the city manager with the approval of a majority of the council from employing private counsel as it is deemed necessary." All right, so with that, anybody have any questions or insights, thoughts?
I'd just like to say that he's been with us a long, long time and has a lot of, a lot of qualifications and he knows Perry well, and he has been able to step in many times, so we needed him to, but hopefully now we allow, we don't have to do quite so much work.
I have a question. As I read through this, do, do we appoint Russ each year?
I don't know. I, yeah.
Should we, should we both do that each, beginning of each year, or?
Or is it kind of like the city?
No, there's no requirement there. I mean, you're, you're city attorney until you choose to terminate me. And I have never had any contract.
That's gonna be my next question.
Yeah, I've never had a contract for 38 years. Uh, our, our contract isn't, I, I don't have an indemnity clause. I don't have, if I get sued, you have to represent me. I don't have, if I make a mistake, uh, you can't sue me for more than, than what you pay me each year, which is present in engineers' contracts. I have, I have none of that. I have nothing to protect me and my job here. I have had no pension here, I've worked here for 38 years, uh, no sick days, no vacation you have provided me healthcare. My rate 38 years ago was a hundred dollars an hour, 38 years later, it's a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. So an increase of 50% over 38 years. I have, uh, you know, recently, uh, we've closed some complex transactions. The hospital was a real complex transaction, and just getting that to a place where that, you know, uh, was, was, was able to be closed, uh, that went over a two-year period. During that times, there were some high billings. And there was also high billings be, because we didn't have, and I say high billings, there was a high number of hours. That does not mean, it, there's high billings, be, because my rate is, is less than, than a lawyer coming out of law school. Lawyers coming out of law school charge significantly more than I do per hour, but Perry's been a longtime client. Uh, I do a lot be, and, and, and the reason is, is that I've been doing this as an attorney for 45 years, and this is all I do. And, and I've been the city attorney of a city 10 times larger than yours, uh, for 14 years at the start of my career, and, and a city attorney for three years prior to that, that's 10 times larger, well, that's a hundred times larger than, than, uh, this group. For instance, you know, 45 years ago, I was the legal counsel to the Oklahoma City Historic Preservation Commission and attended all their meetings, so. You can imagine if you're the legal counsel of the Historic Preservation Commission, Oklahoma City, you've had some experience in historic preservation, 'cause they, they're really into it. But, but I haven't had a contract. Anytime that you no longer want me employed here by a vote of a majority of the quorum, you do it and I just walk away. And there's no, there's no, I mean, there's no qualm, hard feeling or anything, and you owe me nothing. Uh, and, and that's the way I like it, because that's the way it's best for the client. Uh, I have never had an executive session. I don't believe you can have an executive session. At least that's Matt Love's opinion, is kind of the authority on Open Meeting Act, because we're independent contractors, and you, you need to be an individual, uh, uh, salaried officer, employee. I don't know, chief financial officer, maybe an officer. I mean, I'm, I'm not really an officer of this, of this corporation. Officers are defined in the municipal code as, as the city council and a clerk or treasurer, whether elected or appointed. So, uh, I, I would just say that, that, that my work has been, uh, much broader than representing you in courts, because over the 38 years, uh, go ahead and try to count the number of times you've been in court. Uh, we, we try to steer clear of, of courts in, 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 in my representation, but, you know, uh, I do things that other city attorneys don't do and that I suppose Nate can do. I mean, in the past two years, uh, 1.3 million dollars in, in federal funds, which you wouldn't have got if I wouldn't have put those projects together. So 1.3 million dollars in, in federal funds, you know, pays a lawyer for a long period of time. I'll, I'll tell you, the truth, the truth is in local government now, everything has become so complex, so complex, that not having a lawyer read, read your paper, you know, read, read the stuff that you're entering into and, and, and advising you is, is folly. And, and even to the extent not having somebody that is seasoned in municipal law knows what's going on and the state, the opportunities that are there, i- is folly. I mean, because you're gonna miss opportunities. So, you know, I look at this new thing as, there's, I shouldn't have talked to Rose. You know, I mean, that wasn't my function. There, there's one thing, and, and she had somebody wanting to put a sewer line across her property to get to their property, you know, and there's something that I shouldn't be involved in, but there wasn't anybody else. And there's a lot of those that come in, and it just falls to the person that knows how to fix it, you know? And, and I wanna see as we move this, uh, into, uh, administrative matters are taken care of by our administrator, okay? And I can be a help to him. That's the way you have, and it has been like that in the past. It's been like that with Mary Rupp, it's been like that with Roy Rainey, it's been like that with.
Jim Davis.
With Jim Davis, with our, with some of our administrators in the past. And then we've had times then, that it hasn't. But what I haven't been willing to do is to allow Perry to slip. I mean, if somebody needed to fill something in, I would fill it in, okay? Just because I wouldn't want Perry to slip. But, I am your employee, I don't have a contract, uh, I, I, I will do what you, what you want. I, I'm 68 years old, I have many cities, okay? Perry's always been considered to me my, the place where I devote my most attention. When I'm thinking outside of working, I'm thinking about what, wh- what can I do in Perry? Because you guys have helped me raise my kids, put my kids through college, I mean, it's been, it's been really good both sides. I'll just tell you that. And, and thank you for the opportunity that I've had. But, you know, I see this as a, as a management team. You know, Nate comes in with his experience, but you can't replace 45 years of municipal law and an administrative experience, because, you know, I have, you can't, that, that just doesn't come up, but I will do what you want me to do. So, you know, what we've had here is this language, "As may be required by the council." You know, I don't know if it was required or not, you know, some of the stuff I did, but I definitely filled holes, when, when, when it was needed to fill holes, and I think it'll be a lot less needed to fill holes now, you know? And particularly since we've got a lot of our projects. One of the big ones, this Perry Lake project is a, is a big project, and we've gotta make sure that that comes up timely and flawless. This 405 permit thing was a real disappointment. In, in your, in your zoning regulations and all that, all of that involves ordinances and things that must be, that must be adopted. There's some things that we need to change at the legislature, that I've written the statutes, and we've presented the legislature book, but we've never gone back and presented it and really did a good push on them. All, all those things, we're going to talk, uh, to Nate about, and, you know, what, what I want to give him is I wanna give him all the information that I have, and then have him tell me what part of that he would like me to do, because he can direct work and you can direct work. But the most important thing is that we don't let, uh, that we don't miss opportunities, because right now, it's still time for opportunities. You know, there's gonna be another ARPA, uh, I think at our last, on our last meeting, we, we, we did, uh, that engineering stuff and got that. Many communities didn't do that. We, we got that done. And that, of course, is a result of, you know, CO. There's a fourth member of the management team that isn't here, and he's fantastic, you know, to work with. So, I mean, I, I think that Perry is, is well-served by your current thing, but that's self-serving. But I've had a grand jury find that I was self-serving, so, in writing, so arrogant and self-serving, so, uh, maybe that's true.
Sometimes you gotta be.
I would just like to add, with Nate coming from another state, I think that he will make the list of Oklahoma law.
I, I appreciate you stepping forward and filling in for the, when we had vacancies. And I feel like you're saying what, what I'm wanting to hear, and what, what I wanna hear is, is that now that we've got a city manager, give him that chance to take on some of those administrative and other functions.
Absolutely.
Because we're, we're still gonna need an attorney. I, I would just love to see him take on more of that day-to-day stuff that, like what we just went through a few minutes ago, uh, that we really shouldn't be taking your time for.
I, I completely agree. I completely agree.
And I've appreciated these reports that you've, you have us in council now. It helps a lot, just with the accountability as well, which I'm hoping that now that we have a full administrative team, we can have that from, from each member, because the three of you report to council, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. So you guys don't just report, it's, it's not that Nate's just the CEO and you work below him, you work with the council, you represent us.
Yeah, and that, that's the way it was set up.
Right.
And, and the whole idea under the charter form, I mean, it, it's, it's different. This whole CFO thing is different. You will not find that in many city manager governments, and many city managers. And many city managers would be afraid of that, okay? But it's bringing a whole level of financial accountability into the city if the city manager doesn't have that skill, or even if they do have that skill. And it's the ability for you to be presented different opinions, okay? If you're presented the same opinions all the time, you need to know honestly what each one of us think. Most of the time, it'll be the same, it'll be the same. Oftentimes, it's not. I will tell you and I can give you, I can give you five major stories. One, where the city council, Enid, would have been indicted. And they were indicted in Arkansas for the acts of a sewer manager. And the manager recommended to ignore the Department of Health. And I turned all of our documents over to the Department of Health. And what we ended up with was a fine instead of the council getting indicted. Exact same crime, exact same facts, and the council in Little Rock were served and were indicted. Sometimes the opinions differ, okay? But you are the government and you guys make the decisions.
One question I have, maybe this is just more of a policy thing. So, kinda going back, without having a contract, how do we budget for a city attorney? I mean, is it essentially just, this is gonna sound bad, but is it essentially like a blank check year over year? Like, how do we plan, how we spend that?
We budget it based off prior year.
Prior years.
expenditures adjusted for what we know were one-off, like this year.
Right.
Big one-offs related to the hospital. Well, related to two things, the hospital and no city manager, you know, in place. So we just adjust, we kind of have, you know, a set number, you know, that we try to look at and then adjust that piece based off of, based off of what's needed. You know, we know that, you know, Mondays are Bryce's day here, you know, we have an eight-hour day, you know, so we just kind of run out that piece, you know, in a base number for the year and then go through and go, well, historically, we've had three extra projects, so we're probably going to have, you know, another whatever, you know, five-hundred hours, you know, of time that's probably going to be spent and we set a budget based off of that piece.
So as an independent contractor, where does that show up on the budget?
It's in the administration department and other charges and services.
Okay. And then also, so without a contract or anything like that in place or, you know, in the city charter, not saying this is gonna happen, but like, you know, you go to Japan, something happened, plane crash. What happens, what do we as a city council do next? We just appoint somebody, what happens to?
If something happens to you, what do we do?
Well, you're gonna have a real problem.
Right. Yeah, but like, oh, your nails are correspondence.
Or your travel. Well, no, you're, this is first the longest vacation I've ever had. And I was communicated, I was in communication the whole time.
Right.
But yeah, if I die, you're gonna have to start with someone, because most municipal attorneys have a few years of experience. And there's really no one up here in the northwest, north, central quadrant that's not retired.
Right.
There were some, but they're retired. And they're normally former city attorneys of big cities, like the former city attorney of Ponca City, the former city attorney of Enid, you know, those are kind of the, former city attorney of Stillwater, John Dorman, who is still practicing, he's with the Lester's firm, my assistant. So, I mean, there are a few, but, I mean, I'm not intending to, I'm not intending to retire in the next number of years.
Right. If like something happened and like, you know, we're working on this, you know, Crowe project or some other project, are those documents held at city hall or are they, are they on your laptop or are they in an office?
Oh, you have, you have every document that I've ever, that I've ever created in Dixie's files. You tell, do you not have all my?
There's thousands.
I mean, yeah, you have, you have so much. And you have the whole municipal code. I mean, I've recodified the municipal code a number of times. You've got the codes in Word, you've got the contracts in Word, you've got the ordinances in Word, you've got the resolutions in Word, you've got, you know, you've got all of that.
Right. But without a contract in place or anything in our city charter about, you know, if you were to walk away or something were to happen?
Well, a contract doesn't bind, a written contract doesn't bind a person to a place in, I mean, in Oklahoma, any employee can walk away, whether you have a contract or you don't. You know, the whole concept of having a contract is a contract protect the contractors. And they just do. That's why contractors have contracts. Because the person that you're contracting with is making promises to you.
Read the engineering contract. Your point being, read the engineering contract. Who's protected?
Yeah, any contract, they're all, the person's protected. I'm telling you that at this meeting, well, you don't have the item on the agenda, but if you have the item on the agenda, you know, you could fire me and I would thank you for my service and I'd pick up and walk out. Now, I don't know what else a contract would do, but I don't have a problem with a contract. It's just the charter says that there ought to be no terms. I mean, that's why we have, no one should have a term, an indefinite term. That's why even Nate's contract provides month-to-month, which is the most minimum term that they're given. You shouldn't have a term because then you're locked in perhaps to pay that during that term. And I would never want to be paid for work that I hadn't done, you know? I mean, the way it is, is it provides the council the ultimate, the ultimate option.
I was gonna say, I may be misunderstanding, but I think the question more around is, you're working with client B on some negotiations. Something happens to you or you decide to move on, are those negotiations in the middle without it being completed? Do we have copies of that or how do we kind of know where you are? Am I making sense there? You and Christie are negotiating, Christie's a bad example because she works for the city, pretend she doesn't, but you guys are negotiating in the middle of something that we're all excited about. Something happens to you, are those interim documents or discussions? Is the new city manager a part of those discussions?
Oh, always. The manager always gets a copy of everything, everything that I put out goes to the manager and to the clerk. And sometimes, and sometimes to Russ because I want Russ to review it. Everybody gets copies and they will tell you that there's draft, nuke that one, new one, draft, nuke, I mean, you know, it gets down to the, okay, this is final, final, and then it's final with a date on it, you know? And I put dates at the end because you've gotta look for the last date. No, I mean, share all the.
Usually after you meet with somebody, you always send an email, I had this conversation, da-da-da-da.
Yeah, I always try to detail all the communications that I have with folks. But, you know, what I don't do, and most attorneys spend thirty percent, thirty, forty percent covering their butt. They just do, that's what they do. And perhaps engineers do that. And so, everything you do, you write down stuff about what you did, you know, so that if there's any question in the future, you know, you've papered it, you've told them. I'm not always as good. My practice is not geared to cover myself, you know? I mean, I don't have enough time in my legal practice, the time that I wanna spend working to waste your money. That's just the truth. I mean, I don't, I don't bill hours to the city of Perry to make up some hypothetical budget that I need to have each month because someone else will want me for that time. What we've done in the past is I've come here four days a month, which is thirty-two hours I've come here, you know, essentially four days a month. You also pay for my travel, but you don't pay expenses or any of that. And I drive cars that eat up a lot of gas. But, I mean, that's essentially what we do. And in that day, we try to resolve any issues that there are with the staff. There's a lot of court work that we do because we have a municipal court. I've gotten with the manager. Some managers have been more involved than other managers. I would think that Nate, for the first, you know, I would recommend for the first year, you sponge up everything you can get, you know? Because you're new to the state and, you know, I know I've got a whole lot I'd like to transmit to him, a whole lot that I'd like to see him do and him to learn. But it'll take a while. I mean, just to be honest.
Is there a Bryson Associates or is it just you or, you scared me a little bit when you said if you get hit in the head that we're?
It's just me. No, it's always just been me. But it's been me for thirty-eight years.
Right.
Which is pretty, which is, you know, pretty consistent. I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's pretty good. I've talked about, actually, Russ's brother is a municipal attorney. And I have jobbed some stuff off to Russ's brother, who's a bright guy. And then I also use a gentleman named David Collins in Enid that you'll see the bills come up that have to do with title work because I don't do any title at all. And he has filled in for me in times when I haven't been able to be there, very few. Because I, over the years, I haven't missed, maybe in thirty-eight years, five council meetings. I mean, I just don't, I mean, I'm thirty, thirty-five hours without sleep right now and I'm, and I'm here.
That's no surprise.
No, and I'm here. I am dedicated to the city and always have been. So, but I wanna assure you, it doesn't have to be this meeting. You guys can have it however you want it. And I just wanna be, I want you to know that you can have it however you want it. A lot of times, I have had to play the lightning rod. It's not good, the lawyer to play the, you know, to be the lightning rod. You know, the last time was, was in that debacle of the hospital and me making pleas to raise rates to, you know, to build the hospital that I thought we needed, okay? But I'm also your pitch guy, you know? And that I thought was the proper pitch. It turns out it wasn't the proper pitch at all. We could be a lot more astir and someone wasn't minding, someone wasn't minding the numbers as it should have been. And you never can blame me for the numbers. Because I say it right out from the beginning, numbers right over there.
I'm gonna say I had nothing to do with the hospital, but we'll talk about numbers. I'll take the responsibility on the numbers side for sure.
He's the one.
So, you know, it, numbers on anything that I can control. How's that? Numbers that I can't control, engineer numbers, you know, I'm gonna throw the engineers under the bus whenever it comes to that, architect numbers, those are there pieces. You know, I mean, there's only certain things that we can't control, but it is, what is our numbers. But, guys, I mean, I'm gonna tell you, in the grand scheme of things, I'm looking forward to us getting back to the management team concept that we had when Roy was here, when Jim was here, when Mary was here, you know? And through that piece, I thought those were the prime years of Perry because you all were really getting the bang for your buck. And you were getting what mattered the most taken care of. You have a, I'll look at it kind of as the mayor was putting it out, you know, I mean, you've got the city attorney and you've got the CFO and we're here to advise you all. You know, now, ninety-five percent of the time, we're probably gonna be on the same page with the city manager and concurring as those things come up. Whenever we're not on the same page though, we will have had full discussions about why we're not on the same page and we'll all know why we don't agree before you guys ever even see it, before it becomes a council issue, before it plays out. But that comes from the relationship that the three of us will carry on. And for that matter, Matt, where we throw in the engineering piece and that side. What you're getting is you're getting a ton of experience, a ton of years of experience. Not only Bryce's forty-five years plus, you're getting our twenty-five years plus. In our situation, you're not getting just Russ, but you're getting the firm itself. Very few municipalities are actually served with four CPAs that literally any day of the week could walk up here and take over from a financial accounting stand what is going on. So, a little different than Bryce's situation, you don't worry about, heck, let's hope Russ gets knocked off. You'd much rather have Meredith or Tracy or Brayton up here, you know, at the end of the day. That's why you're sending me out in the tornado. But, you know, that gives it a little different. But the concept of what we know and what we bring to the table is something that you couldn't go higher. In my opinion, you couldn't go higher than one person to come set in this job for what our contract is here. And our contract, honestly, you know, we had started out in our base, monthly was five-thousand dollars a month, and it's been five-thousand dollars a month since two thousand and seven. You know, we had never changed that. What we do is we, the agreements with the city managers are, the contract says, any additional services that are requested, we will then provide, kind of similar to Bryce's concept of you guys request it, we do it. We have absolutely no problem. But we still work out the same numbers and the same pieces that were two thousand and seven, you know, that we started with. And our whole goal though is to take care of and make this better. You know, we could, we could talk about union negotiations, we can talk about hospital transfers, we've talked about hospital construction. The things that we have seen and done in our firm, the things that Bryce has seen and done, honestly, are probably priceless in the net benefit if you were to just throw my person A to come in here and try to do this, you know? We go for over seventy-five municipalities across the state, month in and month out. You know, I'm going to almost reiterate what Bryce said, and I don't wanna sound like the record, but Perry was one of those places that from the very get-go for us was a great place. You know, go back and look through the mayors and through the pieces, you know, we've enjoyed the time that we spent here. We've enjoyed the things that we've got to do, the projects that have come up. The tough times, maybe not enjoyed them, but being able to get through them and then, but the great times, whenever things are great and going, that's the fun part of our job, you know? And being able to be a part of you, a part of the decision-making and giving you all the resources to make the right decision. The decision you make might not be the decision that I would make, that doesn't mean that it's the wrong decision, but I'm gonna advise you what I see as best. Bryce is gonna advise what he sees as best. At the end of the day, you guys are gonna look to Nate and say, Nate, what's your call? You know, I mean, you're gonna get into opinions, but Nate, what's your real call? And then you guys get to make that decision. That teamwork is what gets us the best decisions because we all come from a tad bit of a different approach. Bryce would spend every penny that was ever made plus about twenty percent if I gave him the reins to do it, you know? I'm not gonna, I'm gonna save you twenty percent, you know, on my conservative side. Somewhere in the middle, we're gonna find the right balance in how those numbers come out. We go to meetings, we go to, we set through stuff. What Bryce gives away, I'm kicking him under the table because it's like, no, you can't get that away. But that's how this works the best together. And that's really where you get the ultimate piece of the resources. Ours is much similar, I'm not trying to say change section, well, I have to, you know, ours is much similar. You know, we're here until you tell us we're gone. And whenever you tell us you're finished with us, we will walk out the door and move on. Because there's, while we love it and we wanna see the best, we know that decisions have to be made. And whenever you guys make those decisions, that's what we smile at and say, hey, we will counsel and there's no hard feelings, you know, we move on. There's, there are bad times and I'm surprised Bryce didn't tell the story, but, you know, I've walked out before. And about two or three months later, got the call, come back, and we walked back in and picked up exactly where we left off. Because, you know, that happens. Some people don't appreciate, don't understand really the magnitude of what we do or what we bring until we're gone. And then once we're gone, it's like, oh, whoops, maybe we didn't know all of that. Because a lot of the stuff that we take care of is really the behind-the-scenes. Whenever you guys... Whenever you guys see it and know about it, that's when there's really a problem. Whenever you don't hear about it or you don't see it or you don't know, it's like, this is the good stuff, you know? That's where really our value is the most is when we're not bringing you all an issue because it's already been taken care of and wiped out. Uh, what do we have to bring into the council level? Then you know it's something significant and it's even more than what we could handle, take care of, prove, you know, do, you know, in, in the backside of things. So, our, our goal, my goal is always, unlike Bryce's, to not be the center of what this discussion is, you know? Our goal is always to try to run under the radar so that you're not worried about something, you know? And to the extent that there is an issue or there's something that needs to be addressed, that's what we're here for too, to raise the flag and say, hold on, you know, we're the, I feel like we're the final check of balance. We're gonna implement and we're going to go through and do the city manager's plan. For the last six years, that's exactly what we did, but if you remember over the last six years, those of you that have been here, we also raised the flag whenever we said this doesn't work because that's our responsibility. We're that check and balance independent of the city manager. I don't have to answer, I get to work with Nate, but I don't have to answer to him in what opinion I give you. Now, if we get to the point that our opinions are just gosh, he is, then it's really not effective for us to both be here. One of us needs to go, usually that's our role. But from that standpoint, we wanna be here as the check and balance to tell you, yes, this is gonna work or no, you can't do that. Even if, if it's his best idea and he's insistent that we do it, there are things I'm gonna tell you, you guys know, you can't afford five million dollars on a fire station on leased property that we're paying fifty thousand dollars a year on. Do you see what I'm saying? There are just things that no matter how great and grandiose the idea is and it, and it might need to happen, I'm gonna tell you from a financial standpoint, you can't do it. And that's where we try to come in, is we try to resolve it before I have to stand up and tell you no, but whenever it comes here, you're still gonna look at me and the answer's still going to be, I don't see how you can afford to do this. Or yes, this is within what we, this is within our realm, this is what we can handle. Let's go do it, let's make this happen.
So, downing back a little bit, um, kinda going back to what the agenda item was, um, talking about, uh, and thanks for clarification on the, on contract side of things, but going back to talking about what the role of city attorney is. Now that we've got a full team and you're not having to fill or fill in different spots, what do we, what do we expect of a city attorney to do?
Before, before you answer that, let me just throw out three things, just three things. Industrial Park, South Commercial Park, and this. TV, you on TV. Those are mine, those are mine. Those are just three out of a bunch. No one else said, let's go buy that property. Let's go buy that property. Let's contract with the cable company, come with a funding source and create Pint, which became this thing, which put TV before Facebook, before any of that on T, you know, on TV. You know, I did that, okay? Legal rules? No. I mean, not legal rules. None of those are legal, are legal rules. I just wanna point that out. And, and I have a whole series of those things with, is that something that's good? Is that something that's not good? You know, and I just throw that out as something. I mean, if I have an idea or something, do you wanna hear about it? And then, and then perhaps you direct it? Because I'm still gonna have ideas, you know? But you don't have to pay me a bunch of money, I, I'm not, you know, I, I think perhaps what we haven't been doing is we haven't been ever having this conversation.
Right.
In thirty-eight years, ever, not one time.
Right.
Has this conversation ever been had? And I think it's important to have this conversation and I would have loved to have had this conversation because if we had this conversation, then, you know, a lot of these, you know, new people get put on the council and they don't realize that, that, the history and what, and who did what, because that all gets lost. And those are just three really quick things that have turned out pretty well, or we think, you know, I mean, the South, the South Commercial Park, we don't know, but now we have a sewer line to it and I think it's gonna turn out to be something really good. I think we're gonna be happy that we acquired that property, so.
I think a lot of this is because we desire transparency more than we've ever had before. And so I think it's important that we understand the roles and I think that you've been dumped on a lot.
Well, and, and probably deservedly so, you know?
I mean, dumped on with work that should have been yours. And, and, um, so I think it's just really important that we understand the roles so that we can protect you and protect everybody in your office and, and.
Well, at least at this point, what, what I figure, and we can call this different and Nate can call it different, but what I've been giving, I've been coming up four days a month to help the city. I mean, that's what I've been doing. And until somebody tells me that, that that's not what you want, and I'm telling you, you guys are having a whole lot of meetings on zoning and planning and doing a whole lot of development, that you need some legal. I mean, you just really do and you need legal in those meetings because, you know, the stuff gets done, then it has to be backed up or something. Uh, that, that's what I say I tend to do, that, that's what I've always done. But i- i- it's really time for the council to tell me what they expect. I can sit down in Norman and show up for an evening meeting and you're not gonna get much of what you've always had. I do that for some communities and they don't get much.
Right.
And there isn't much that happens there, but.
Right. And partially what I'm looking for is, you know, as a council, now that we have a city manager, how do we, how do we utilize our, our city attorney, um, together with our city manager, together with our CFO, sort of defining those roles and responsibilities?
Well, do you think it's something that we figure out tonight or do you think it's something?
No, 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 no.
That, that we work together on and we see how it, so it fits? See, see how you're comfortable with my reports? See how your, how Nate is, is comfortable with, with what he's getting and what he's directing? And, and instead of having one meeting in thirty-eight years, maybe we can do this, we, we can do this a little bit more and, and it can be rewarding for everyone. That would be great.
Yes, yes. And that's what I'm hoping for, that we can have a, a better understanding of what our administrative team is doing, how you guys work together and how you guys work with the council. As a report is, you know, I would think that us as a council, we're doing things differently in what, than how things have been done in the past. And so how do we move forward working together, um, rather than kind of on our own agendas in different directions? Does anyone have any thoughts or insights or questions? As far as with the city attorney role? We still got two others to discuss.
Well, that was the shortest one.
I know, that was the shortest one.
Well, I, I think Bryce said something that, that resonated with me was this, and I think as we go forward and as we work through this, um, I, I would love to do exactly what Bryce said, to have our city manager decide how often and when we get legal counsel.
Yeah.
I think that's, in my mind, that's part of his role.
Right. And the charter is kinda what it says.
So, to, to me, when, when I think about what that role is.
Right.
It's really determined a lot about what my city manager asks. And I know the private sector's a lot different, but we ask for legal counsel all the time, but we ask for them.
Right.
With, with, and so when they come, we, we, we get an opinion and we decide business-wise what makes the most sense. Um, and so I think that's, to me, in my mind, that's what I'm looking for is that, that wonderful resource we can use when we need it, but that we're not abusing it or using it too much.
Right. Yeah. And I'm hoping as we go through the city charter that, you know, we're, we're finding things that we are or aren't doing. Um, you know, are we adhering to our city charter the way we should? And are we using these, these positions that we have in place to, to pull us, supporting them as a council as best we can? All right? Anything else with city attorney role? Questions, thoughts? But I agree, this is something that we should continue talking about and working on. Wait, none? All right. Let's jump over to our CFO.
Are you gonna read it?
Have you guys read it? I mean, I read it before so that those that are watching are kind of on, you know, so the community is on the same page as us and they can hear what, what the charter says and they're all kind of on the same page. So, I'll go and read your. Um, so the purpose of this, all right, that's for the chief executive officer.
I think it's for the safe financial.
Okay.
Financial.
Yeah.
That's a typo.
All right, the purpose of this officer is to ensure compliance with the financial internal control policies of the city and provide for professional fiscal management of the public funds. He shall perform his duties in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles for local governments. He shall be a certified public accountant with experience in governmental accounting, auditing and financial procedures with experience as an auditor or comptroller with the responsibility for financial statement preparation and financial system oversight. The chief financial officer shall prepare all annual financial statements, including the preparation of notes for financial statements and management discussion and analysis, the review of general ledger, um, at least a monthly review for obvious posting and account balancing errors and preparation of subsidiary schedules for the city auditor and the presentation of such financial statements to the council each month or whenever requested. Be resolved all material accounting and posting questions that arise as well as being available to consult with the city auditor during the audit. See assist in preparation of the budget, monitor and implement other necessary or required internal controls as well as supervise financial system operations. Prepare and maintain an accounting policy and procedures manual in accordance with the city's financial operation to assure compliance with generally accepted accounting procedures. Although the CFO is appointed by the council and responsible to ensure adequate internal controls, he shall perform such work as directed by the city manager. Thoughts or questions on that, anybody? So, you assist in the preparation of the budget, so, so it's the city manager that does it, right?
The city manager is responsible for the budget and the implementation of it.
Right.
We were only there to assist.
Right.
Now, that assist has come in different levels over the years based on the financial acumen of the city manager. Uh, you know, so we range widely and pretty much use the, as directed by the city manager portion of that to, to do the majority of the budget work that we've always done.
Gotcha. And Nate, now we do have a contract with your firm, correct?
Yes.
Okay. How does that work?
So, we're contract, we have a contract, it has a, a thirty-day notice clause in it, um, you know, so upon termination, you know, we would, you know, to the extent you guys put a, the item on the agenda, you guys vote to cancel the contract, we'll pretty much done. At that point, we will turn over, you know, the financial work that we've done to date for that year and, um, go on down the road.
Right.
You know, there's, in, in the contract, there is a, is an engagement letter. Um, you know, the engagement letter identifies out, is one of the things Bryce wanted, each of these points that are in here are actually identified out as points in the engagement letter that have to be construed.
Right. Um, so since I'm coming up, you know, on, on year one, is that something that we do yearly or every, so many years?
It has, it has an annual continu-, or an annual continuation clause, unless modified by either party, um, the contract will stand year over year.
Gotcha.
The only time, in my recollection, that we redid it was whenever the firm name changed. Um, in two thousand and ten, you know, we changed from Minex to H and R, and at that point, we did a contract, but I don't think we've done one in, in ten years. Um, the modifications, we've just run under the original contract, so.
The contract, have any compensation guidelines?
Has, has a monthly, a monthly fee related to, which is five thousand dollars a month. Um, that's the same five thousand that started in two thousand and seven. Um, we've never changed that monthly piece.
And that's for, that's for monthly accounting services.
Monthly accounting services, yes. And then as the special projects come in, special projects and audit will be, build audit, well, at hourly rates, um, those hourly rates are whatever standard hourly rates are, um, they run in our office from fifty dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars.
Right. I think I asked Meredith that once and she wasn't able to tell me what the rates were. She said you had a rate, she had a rate, Brayden had a rate, and they're all different.
Yeah. The, and it raises, because, and even outside of Meredith, we actually sometimes use even lower staff to do additional invoice pulling, you know, I mean.
Right.
So, we try to keep those costs down, so, you know, sometimes you get, you get a fifty dollar an hour rate, um, for, for that staff.
Right.
And we just, we keep it and then roll it up under each project that, that we do month in and month out. So, you can see.
So, talk to Brayden.
Talk to Brayden, exactly, yeah. You don't want Russ.
The fifty-dollar guy?
Yeah. You, you want Brayden until he actually has to go figure out something that he doesn't know anything about, then you'd much rather that it be Russ than, than we talk to instead of Brayden. Instead of twenty hours on it, and then maybe we can get it done in two.
Right.
But he's getting there.
Yeah.
It's just time and it's, it's, it's knowledge, you know? Bryce did kind of hit on it. It, it's the, it's the history of the stuff that honestly is probably more valuable in, in a engagement than it is sometimes the day-to-day operations of, of what it is all, but the knowledge of what's there and, and how we got to where we are currently in whatever the situation is.
Is this like other contractors, do you have to go to bid when we renew or?
Professional services do not, are, don't, do not have to be bid under state statute.
Statute.
So, you know, we, we do it as, as that, um, just as professional service contract.
Okay. So, in the budget, you fall in the same as city attorney?
Yep, government administration.
Gotcha.
So, that would be sixty thousand plus.
Sixty thousand plus, yeah. And, and usually, and I'll tell you, historically is, has run someplace between eighty-five and probably a hundred and five thousand, a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year.
Depending on your projects.
Depending on the years, the projects, the city managers that are in place, you know, all, all of those pieces. Um, you know, it's, it, I don't think it's run, I mean, I'd have to go back and actually poll and, and see, but, you know, it's, it's within that range, um, year in and year out. And honestly, for a community this size, I, I will tell you, the other communities we serve in this size are literally in that exact same price range.
Right.
Um, you know, I, I know what we, what we charge across the board on those and, and it's a very similar rate.
Um, so the, the accounting that we do in-house, we have, we have an accounts payable in-house, we have payroll, um, so you're just overseeing.
And utility billing.
And utility billing, right.
Yeah.
So, so your firm just oversees the, just the reports?
They do the daily operations of those pieces. Whenever a problem arises, whenever they don't know how to code something, wherever they don't know how to process something, whenever that issue arises, they call us and, and that's the daily kind of oversight and operation of those pieces. Whenever, the PCA calculation, I mean, it's done once a month, Autumn sends that to us. You know, I mean, we, we just, we look over it and make sure whenever it's a negative that we're not doubling down in the negative. Anyhow, there's things that have happened over the years that we just have procedures in place that we help with. Um, related to payroll, most of that is year-end stuff. Uh, we, we do the quarterly reports and the nine forty-ones around payroll, but all of the internal processing of payroll is handled in-house with HR. Um, here, you know, we just take care of, make sure quarterly reports are filed, we make sure that, you know, the uploads and all of that in, year-end stuff gets taken care of. If she does have questions, you know, heck, one of the, one of the very first projects that, that we even did for Perry outside of our normal piece was, um, was related to a union contract and, and a repricing, um, and some back pay based on a union agreement that, that came out back in two thousand and seven, you know? So, those are the kind of HR things we usually help with, um, you know, that actually involve dollars and we've gotta make sure that we're getting the right formulas or the right numbers, you know, in, into place in doing that. Related to payables, really the, the assistance there is more of whatever needed needs, shit, no, hey, hold on, there wasn't code this year, does that get coded there? Hey, this budget looks like it's. Hey, this budget looks like it's over, we're getting out, we're running out of money. You know, that's the kind of piece that we help with there. Also related to cash flow, making sure that, you know, we have adequate cash in the checking accounts that the monies are getting paid out of, making sure we cover from a financial standpoint, we're not spending into budget deficits and those kind of things.
Does that sort of assistance fall under the accounting services or is that hourly?
Yeah, that's just, the mainly falls under the accounting services.
The accounting services.
There are, everyone's, oh, there's a special project that comes up that is, that's a one-off. It's not, it's not in that monthly work of requesting questions and those kind of things. It's more related to, to a backlog offender. We had an embezzlement one time, and so we had to go back through payable records and go back through purchase orders and who had approved in doing that. That was an excess of just monthly. We don't do that month in and month out as far as processing. Utility billing is really, really very limited in what we do. That's more processed within the system, it's a lot of that piece, but whenever, whenever Autumn comes up with questions, whenever something happens, maybe it's a daily deposit on, from cashiering, you know, hey, we got in this check from the Malzon Foundation grant, you know, came in one time. Where do we code this? How do we want to report that? You know, they make up the phone call and we kind of keep that part going so day-in and day-out operations continue. What we're dealing with right now, related to HR, there's, there's a couple of back issues with the IRS that are in excess of just our normal monthly piece related to timing of deposits and how the numbers got reported, and a handful of things that we're, we're taking that on. It was an extra project, but, you know, it's not in the normal course of our daily activities.
Right.
So we usually bill extra for those pieces.
So would grants and grant applications be outside?
That's outside of the normal, you know, the normal work of, the normal monthly functional work of what we do every month.
Is our sales tax money direct deposit? I mean.
Yes.
And who gets a notification of what was, are you the only ones that get notification?
No, no. Actually, it comes to the city, it comes to Nita's, or you just come to Nita's email.
Actually, what about after the 10th usually of each month, the customer service rep that's up front, Heather, will sign in to, and get the deposit letters, and then she enters it in and gets me and Russ a copy.
Any questions to ask?
I don't know if I have a question, maybe more of a comment, and Nate may have already agreed to it, but as a new city council person, when we get ready to get into the budget process, I don't feel like I can learn enough in the hour and a half that we're here twice a week. I would really love to understand better what's involved. I mean, when I was on the school board, school finances, as you know, are very unique. I would love to understand better what, what we're dealing with and where it's going. So I don't know if we schedule some two-on-ones or something to, to get us better educated on that. I just want to make sure that, as a brand-new person, I'm making decisions that are right.
We did that last year.
And the year before.
Okay.
Because I was new first, that kind of, well, actually, I was a month on.
We, we had done it for several years prior, there was a gap. I think when you got on, we pushed, pushed back to try and get those, you know, and again, we're just have small, small group meetings going over each line and get some explanation.
It's a big organization.
So I would encourage it.
And really, I think the gap started whenever the city manager kind of took over the budget maintenance and that piece, and you guys, it just kind of directed him to take care of that. So we've got to stop that. But we've gone, we've gone through all extremes.
I wasn't pointing that toward you.
Oh, okay.
That wasn't pointing, no, I was.
We've always been available. Matter of fact, heck, the education side, I mean, after you guys have been through it about three times, you'll probably retain it for.
I strongly encourage that you handle those, and I think with new administration, we, we team this up and not just for new people. I mean, there's, we provide an opportunity for all of us to get in there and hear what's, what's going on and, and soak up the, you know, all the information that comes in the budget.
And it'll, and it'll give you all a chance to give Nate some insight and direction of what you individually want. You know, I mean, because even you guys across the council have different individual desires or focuses or areas that you want to spend money. And unfortunately, as Nate and I were talking today, that amount of extra money to spend continues to dwindle. You know, I mean, we're not getting more money, we're getting less money to work with year in and year out because of inflation and because of cost and those kind of things. So, and we've got to prioritize, and we've got to know where, where you all want to go as a council, because that direction kind of gives us then the basis to help make decisions. You know, I can't make, I can make a decision on where I think the road needs to go, but if you guys are going down the left path and I'm still trying to make decisions to help you go down the right path, you know, that wasn't correct and wrong, that was left and right, but it's not really good. You know, I mean, that doesn't work. And so those meetings are really more insightful for us to hear where you are and what your position is, and why you would or wouldn't want to do X, Y, and Z, and why and where we end up touching these other things and making them happen. So, you know, that's, that's where we are.
I think the purpose of those meetings is, at least from what I've seen in the past, is when we're meeting, you know, in small groups, it's an opportunity for you to give budget direction so that when the budget comes before you to approve, right, you're like, okay, I've given my two cents, I understand what I'm approving, because the budget's, it's a big document, right? If we show up the day of approval and like, okay, why don't you approve this, and you haven't looked at it before and talked about it and asked questions, it's not going to be effective. So, yeah, I totally agree. Those small group meetings are essential.
I would like more time, I mean, for, to start on the budget in May, and, you know, even like last year, being on council for a month and then we jumped right into budget, that was, I mean, drinking out of a fire hose real quick. You know, being able to look at, starting to work on budget earlier in the year, I, you know, I think would be beneficial.
Well, and let's, let's talk in a theory piece, because, you know, I mean, we're talking about the budget, and Nate and I kind of had this discussion earlier. You know, the budget's really made up of two pieces. The operational side, which we effectively know every number that should be in the operational side except for what pay raise you want to give. You know, I mean, what are we going to contract for pay raise, and what's the health insurance increase going to be? I can, I can give you pretty much within $50,000 what that number's going to be for next year's budget, because it's operational, okay? I know year in and year out, we've done it enough, I know where those operational costs. What I don't know is what the capital outlay is going to look like. And that's really, from a budget standpoint, where do you all have the real direction to go? It's the capital outlay. Now, if you want more money, now we have to go back to the operational side and you cut raises, or you cut positions, or you cut benefits, because the, if you go back and look at those pie charts and everything else that I explained to you, you know, 80% of our total cost of operations is personnel. So we can't do anything else additional without cutting personnel, because we're so limited on the other expenses, they just don't add up. So, you know, as we talk through the budget process and as we talk through those things, what I really, what I instill in you is, we have a, we have a finite number. We have about $225,000 to spend on capital outlay inside of our budget, based on what those numbers are going to be. And that number, as I was telling Nate, continues to shrink each year whenever our sales tax doesn't increase significantly, or whenever we don't do utility rate increases. So we used to be at 300, $320,000, that was my number. We didn't decrease rates last year, we gave up pay raises and we had increase in health insurance, we didn't bring in significantly more sales tax, so now our number is $220,000 that we have for capital outlays. And that's really the discretionary part of the budget is that capital outlay number that's really left over, unless we want to get into reductions in services or departments or those kind of things. So, you know, that's where, that's where I come from. And I will tell you, that's been a standing number. The number used to be about $700,000, and over the last decade, as we didn't do rate increases and as sales tax didn't increase or actually fell off in certain years, those numbers that we have available for discretionary spending, which is capital outlay in my term, has continued to shrink. And we're now down to $225,000 that is discretionary, you know, to put back into the budget. So we can have those conversations and we can do it, but I'm going to tell you, that's going to be the same answer every year, until we decide we're going to increase a revenue source, we're going to give ourselves more money, or until, you want to say until sales tax grows, but I was explaining to Nate, even a 10% increase in sales tax raises about $60,000 a year. We have to sell 60 million, or we have to sell $6 million of additional goods to get that $60,000. But, you know, you've got to sell $6 million worth of additional goods in the city of Perry. Divide $6 million, divided by the number of citizens that we have in town, you're going to tell me that those citizens are going to spend $18,000 a piece, $20,000 a piece additional next year to generate our sales tax? It's just not going to happen. I want to be the practical side of that. It's just not going to happen. So we have to work within the budget, and we know that that's our number, and that's, that's where we go at the end of the day, unless we want to cut services or reduce workforce.
So I've looked at the timeline you gave us. If Joe and I are passionate about, let's say, reducing expenditures on the personnel side, and the rest of the board doesn't want to go that, when do we have those discussions? I mean, there's.
We have it between the first draft coming that you get in May and before that June 23rd that we adopt it. I mean, we have that six or eight weeks there that, I mean, we can, we can go through and really say, hey, this is, this is what we want to do. Last year, we adopted a budget, let's use this, last year, we adopted a budget that had effectively a $240,000 net loss for the year. That was what we adopted, okay? So we're going into this year expecting to lose $240,000. You can pretty much pick up that same budget and it will apply to 2024. The increases that we've had in CPI, the total operating costs, haven't gone up that much. So are we fine? Now, because of not spending all of the dollars within the departments, because the department head's taking care of business and those kind of things, that $220,000 is, we're not going to recognize $220,000 loss this year. But everybody's done their part to spend less to get us there. But I would tell you, next year, I would start with that $220,000 net loss in our operating departments, and we'll then decide what pieces, you know, we need to do and how that, that needs to go out. You know, without utility rate increases, without additional revenues coming in from sales tax or use tax or other fees and charges that we have, which are honestly minimal in the big scheme of things, we have that piece to play with. And if we want to get to a zero, you know, I would suggest you guys, as we start through this, hey, Nate, I want to see zero. Or Derek may say, I'm fine losing a quarter of a million dollars on the budget side, keep us in that. You see what I'm saying? I mean, let Nate kind of know that philosophy, and we can start feeding that through the document. He can, I can, however we end up, we've got to talk about the assignment, I will probably do it this year, just because he has so much to get his hands around, drinking through, drink from the fire hose effectively, you know, let me help and I'll help him point to, hey, here's a hole and here's a hole. And he's going to have his own financial analysis as he looks at it, because he comes from a municipal government setting. You know, he knows, he knows more about how to kind of change those numbers probably than, than anybody else we've had setting in that position. So it may be the situation that you guys say, hey, I want to see break even at the end of the day, and charging with it. And say, Nate, give us break even, you know? Nate, we really need to start replenishing some reserves, we need to, we need to have a net operating cash of, you know, what you're comfortable with, you know? And we can work with him on getting those numbers into that point.
I'll back up just a little bit to the specific question and hit on something you said, which is, before that May date, we have more conversation. I mean, not just wait till we get something together, we continue to have these conversations more often and discuss, discuss through that. And there are, are things I think that we can work on, and I'm not, again, I'm not pointing fingers in the direction, this is the whole table. You know, you mentioned we have a good idea on operations side, there's some, some work that we could all do on the capital outlay side, putting things on rotation, putting, you know, whether it's facilities or fleet or anything like that, if we, if we start putting those things on rotation, we have a lot more insight into what that capital outlay is going to be for the next year, and those conversations hopefully get easier as, as we continue and build. And I don't know, what I kind of heard as a comment was, let's see, how new team, how our relationship builds here, and from that, I would say the best thing right now would be over-communication from all of our perspectives back and forth, and making sure that we're all on the same page and understanding.
Yeah, I agree.
Do you have thoughts or comments? Yes, just kind of going back to charter there, so although the chief financial officer is appointed by the council and responsible to ensure adequate internal controls, you're performing work as directed by the city manager. So those would be like the special projects that he needs help with, that's what he's, yeah, that's what he's sending your way.
Yep. You're, you're effectively signed over him. All right, the charter signs over to him, hey, I need some help, get this done, you know the number.
Is that the way that has been working over the last couple of years, where you've been kind of taking the lead?
Right. Different city managers, I'm sure you have.
Depending on, yeah.
It is what, like, what the difference is going to look like.
Right, yeah, that's what we're trying to get as a picture of what this team is going to look like, kind of moving forward.
Because I had the same question on the budget. You said that you guys have served that position in several different facets. I mean, over the last few years, have you guys assisted more with the budget or pretty much taken the lead on the budget?
No, we have actually been pulled out of, we compiled the numbers for the operational side, and then were handed, these are the capital projects, put these in, you know, which was not, not very collaborative, because it never took into account, we only have $300,000 of capital outlay. We were handed $4.8 million worth of capital outlay last year to put into the budget for $300,000. You see what I'm saying? That's how it worked in the, that's how it worked in the past versus, you know, hey, Nate's going to come back and he's going to say, I've got this $600,000 that needs to be done, now how do we fund this $600,000? Historically, that was how we did it, you know? City manager had this capital piece that they knew, and also, this is what we do in the majority of the cities. I've got this capital that I've got to get put in this budget, how do we get it in there? And then from an operational side, we talk through operations, let's make these cuts, let's make these changes, here we can save some money for this department, let's do that. And then we get down to, all right, this is beyond what this group can, can make a decision on, we've got to go to council. And when we go to council, we come back with the ideas of, we need a utility rate increase, we need to cut this department, we need to cut this service, you see what I'm saying? Things that are more your all's level of, of decision-making, to say that we can get in within this expenditure level that Nate says we've got to have to make this year work. You know, it's his budget, it's his implementation of your dream. You're not going to fire me over whether or not Nate did or didn't get what you wanted done, done, you know? My role is to assist Nate to make sure that when you give him a task, that we're here to help him get that task done from a financial standpoint, from a logistic standpoint, you know, whatever we can assist with, that's what we're here to help the city manager with. And that's, that's how in the past this relationship has, has been the best. You know, I mean, Bryce and I have always talked, you know, the one, one of the things that had been missing more recently was our, our lunchtime, you know, I mean, and I know it sounds bad, but you'd be amazed. You know, I mean, and, and I know it sounds bad, but you'd be amazed at how many things we solve. Because whenever I get here at eight o'clock or nine o'clock in the morning and Bryce gets here, you know, 7:30 or eight o'clock, we're all going our own directions. You know, I mean, I've got this project that has to be done and this, you know, we have all of those things that we have to do whenever we're here on site. But whenever we set aside a time that, hey, and, and it doesn't have to be lunch. It's just lunch always seems to be something that all of us do every day. You know, and, and I'll tell you, Bryce and I invited a million times trying to make that happen and it just was never a priority. Um, that's what I hope, and I think will be different in, in this relationship is, is that, you know, he's going to seek more work together to accomplish his goals for where you all have set the game plan. And that's all of us on the same team, you know? I don't, I don't have to sit in every executive session or know every miniscule detail of what goes on, but I've got to know the overall game plan of where you all as a council want to go. Because it's two-fold. You give us, you give the goals, he's trying to implement them. I'm watching the financial side to make sure that the decisions we are making align with that goal. And that's how it really works the best.
To maybe give an idea of what it will look like. So far, what I have planned is, um, I've set aside two hours on Mondays, Monday mornings to meet with these two. Russ will be here every other Monday and then we'll talk on the phone as needed, um, which I'm sure will be quite a bit, especially initially. Um, and then Bryce, as he was doing more, he was more involved in the community development aspect and planning on meeting with him every Monday morning. Um, and that may, you know, dial back as I get brought up to speed, but that gives you some idea of what I'm thinking.
This, this may be too tactical for this meeting, but on, on the days that you, you guys are here, if as a councilman I drop in and have some questions, is that part of our normal fee or is that?
We would love it.
Please, please.
Derek does it a lot. The mayor does it a lot. We would love it.
I've been there a few times.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Well, it seems to me in the house, a lot of the projects that we've done, or those, they were things that was brought to us that we didn't have any knowledge about. I mean, I, I don't know where those projects came from. Does that make sense? It's like we didn't have any voice and those things coming to us, just.
Sort of oversight on what they're doing or like on projects taking place or?
Well, I will express the same level of frustration because, you know, we would start a five-year capital project plan. And, and I can, I can give you, go, go back and look at, at the last fire engine that we had to buy. The last fire engine that we bought wasn't even on the five-year capital outlay plan of the priority list. And there were $18 million worth of projects on that list. But it became the necessity overnight and wasn't even identified as a problem. Okay? I, I, if I'm speaking to, I think what your concern is. That, that is, that was the same problem and the same issue and the same concern that I have. Because I don't know how to advise or plan to get you to the right spot, you know? Whenever, I don't even know that this is on the radar as an issue. Um, you know, and so I think that will be resolved. Now, there are always going to be things that, that come up out of the blue that are emergencies. I mean, a water line breaks and, and we don't have enough valves to shut off and, and section off the, the town, you know, to, to meet the water needs. You know, that one, yes, came out of blue, wasn't expecting. But that's also something that, you know, now we know that it's there. It's, it's a piece that we've got to work through. Um, I think, I hope your frustration, well, it won't be able to be resolved into year one, you know? But over the next 18 months, as Nate gets into this role and is here and meets with the department heads and sees what is there and starts feeling out what need to be the priorities, I think that's where your frustration is going to resolve itself, is his responsibility to really be the voice and be the focus of what those items are. Because I, I know Bryce felt like you. I'm not going to speak for him, he'll tell you, but I felt like I was in the dark 90% of the time as to really what the next big piece was. And that's not how the management team should ever be.
Or we knew what it was and it was so absurd is the amount of money that you'd have to have. And there's just, there was no money. There's future sales tax when they come off that you could commit. But I mean, when you're, you know, you can, if you build it, the money will come. It's not true. I mean, that's not true.
Most of the time if you build it, it will take more money to operate it than we ever originally planned. So it goes the other way. But that, I, I, I think we're going to resolve, hopefully, a lot of the frustrations that, that may have built up over the last few years um, with the working core relationships that, that I'm anticipating are, are going to be great and in place there.
Might have to touch on Gloria's. One of my frustrations that I've kind of seen on some things is that it, once it comes to us, we, you can look at it and see how much time, effort, money, all that's been spent on it. When it really, and to me, and the, maybe in the inception stage or conception stage, should have come to us to see if we even wanted to pursue it before all this time and money and resources were already spent on it. So I would like to see that improve.
For sure. And, and maybe, and I think. Maybe if I, I, I will tell you this, there were a lot of those pieces that the full discussion was had in, in the management side, that this is impossible. Don't spend any more time on it. And didn't get, didn't get helped in. So. But yeah, that, that part I think can be, can be resolved. Um, you know, I, I, I think that part's going to work itself out. I really do. I really do.
Any other comments or questions? Um, let's talk about.
The city manager is not on.
Oh, the city manager is not on there. Can we still talk about city manager?
No.
No? All right.
Do you have any insights to the conversation that, that we've had tonight?
Yeah, um, I have a lot of work to do.
Can't back out now.
Make sure, make sure your lunches are open, obviously.
On my face, every other day.
Hey, listen, this figure doesn't just come naturally. I've got to work on this, okay? So, you know, I mean, and I don't want to look like Bryce, you know, I mean, lose all that weight.
We've been proud.
I, I've got sleep bed. Sleep deprived and malnourished.
Well, I think some of the councils in the past, watching it over a lot of years, have just sat here and just listened to what was brought to them. Where this council is realizing that y'all work for us and we should be giving you our expectations. But sometimes we aren't brought the expectations. I meant like, uh, I've heard there were projects that was suggested to Perry that never even was brought to us to even know, to have a say in or anything. You know, that people wanted to bring to Perry or if we had property for this or property for that. And we didn't hear about it. So those are the things that frustrate me. I meant, it should be our decision whether we want to do something or not, not somebody else's decision. Does that make sense? I say it comes simple, but.
Right.
And I hope that we can build that kind of relationship, right? Where you can come to me and I feel comfortable pitching things to you and you can reach out anytime.
I think it will happen.
All right.
You're real open and I can sit back, it's good.
I think a common theme that I saw in, in both of those positions where city attorney provides legal counsel to council members and to the city manager and does, you know, the additional work that is directed by the city manager. And that's what's proved and that's what we're entrusting Nate with. And with CFO, he oversees the internal controls and then he does work as given by the city manager. So we're trusting you need to.
At the same time, I don't want to, Bryce mentioned something. You know, we don't want to miss opportunities that come across their, their point of view that we're not ever going to see. And because we say it's not their job, they don't bring it to us.
No, right.
We don't want to miss those opportunities. And the same as the manager goes too is, you know, a lot of times we didn't see those opportunities until it was too late to make a decision. And we don't, we don't want that to happen.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, seeing that the team works together is important.
I, I appreciate you putting this on the agenda because I've, I've been unsure what questions I can ask or the meetings seem like it's like bang, bang, bang. We got this, you got to get done, you know, what you can bring up. So this has been great conversations for me to kind of better understand what's going on. And so thank you for putting that on the, on the agenda.
Yeah.
Well, our mayor's fairly new too.
Right, and yeah, I've had all sorts of questions as well, yeah.
And Sammy, I don't know why I always want to call you Jamie, but she's new on the council. And, and it's just, I think it's a good conversation to have. Um, it's given me an opportunity to say, oh, ambitious. And all, all of us can express that and learn what we need to know when it comes to the financial side and those, um, budgets, I mean, the things that he gives us, I'm just almost lost. But I know we have people on the council that are financial people that will understand. And so I have to trust what they say. But by having the conversations and hearing what you say, thanks, understanding to me.
Yeah.
You do pretty good at structuring me out.
No, I think this would be good to continue having on, on our agenda, at least for the next little bit. So especially when we have a new city manager. You know, we can, we can be a part of that, that development in this team that we have. Um, so that we understand what, what they're doing, what their roles and responsibilities are. The community sees that. Um, they don't see, you know, they're not speculating as to what everyone's doing. We're being open and transparent. We're communicating about it, we're talking about it. And that's ultimately what I would really love to see more of. And then that helps us hold you guys accountable. That's what we're elected for, is to keep you accountable and to put things in place to build Perry.
How often do you want to talk about it? Do we want to put this on for, you know, once a month, for the next couple of months?
Could we not do it, could, could we not do this in a way where we list like the major projects and we give you dates and timelines and goals set and, and achievement and, and in the, so that we're actually talking about a project, you know? And then we can talk about how we had each one of this have worked towards that, so it has a practical application instead of just coming back and, you know, because we can talk about this. I can talk about myself all night. You don't need any more of that, you know?
I don't believe it.
No, no, I really think that if we listed projects and showed, you know.
It'd be more productive.
Yes. Something more detailed than just a memo.
Right. Yeah, we got to do a lot.
And so you know, you know where it's going.
Right.
Cause you know, it seems like we've got so many irons in the fire right now that we'll, we'll talk about it one month. And then nothing comes back up until there's a major. But you know, whether it's sewer pipe going in or the, or the dam project, it'd be fun to get an update on each one of those as, as they're progressing.
Yeah.
Which dam project?
Yeah. That's one of the dam projects we got.
I love that. It's a great idea. I can, I can put some on our dynamic agenda that kind of outlines projects and rules.
All right.
Well, I think Nate, you're going to, you, you were thinking about sending us an email once a week, showing what you've done in the past. That I think will be really great too. That keeps you transparent before us and that will help us to know questions before we come.
Yeah. Yeah, I've, I've sent one out last two weeks and I'll continue to do that.
I'm going to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, congrats on the baby boy.
Thanks.
Oh, yeah. Congratulations. Okay, so for this next agenda, Nate, we can get together and talk about how to, not restructure our, our agenda for a meeting, but how we want to fit, fit Nate in. Yeah, right. Um, all right. So let's move on. Item 12, new business.
I just want to.
Oh.
I don't know, 14?
Well, well, yeah, it's just not. I did not pay attention to the numbers. Yeah. I removed some of my.
It is.
Yes, this would be 12.
Yeah. It is.
It's my fault too. I saw it and said I'd fix it and I didn't.
I wanted to ask about the appointment. Have we got anyone in mind or have, have us come forward on that?
Can't really talk about it yet except we're on the agenda.
Yeah.
What else? New business.
Was actually not, was we could have anticipated.
I just thought it should be on every time.
Right.
Yeah, it, it should be put on every agenda from here on out. Cause we've got, 60, 60 days is running. And, and what, what date did he resign?
March 4th.
4th.
Okay, so.
Yeah, we got another month.
Yeah.
All right. See, new business. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Coffee.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis, yes. Cold Iron.
Yes.
Buck.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. We've got two more, yeah.
Can I go ahead and adjourn right now?
I'm ready.
Well, no, we actually have something on these next two.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Cause we got to put Nate on all of them. All right, so let's call a regular meeting for the Perry Municipal Authority for 2024 and have a roll call.
Coffee.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis, here. Cold Iron.
Here.
Buck.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Worthy.
Here. All right, item one, consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda. Second.
Okay, roll call.
Coffee.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis, yes. Cold Iron.
Yes.
Buck.
Yes.
Williams. Brown.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. All right, item four, authorize Nate Reed as signatory on all accounts of the Perry Municipal Authority and for all financial institutions and for all purposes, including but not limited to the signatory on all negotiable instruments, warrants, checks and other evidence of indebtedness. Provide any other additions or substitutions, signatories as deemed necessary.
So moved. Second.
All right.
Laura's ready to go home.
Coffee.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Buck.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. All right, item five, new business. Seeing then, all right, do you have motion to adjourn?
So moved.
See you later.
Okay, coffee.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis, yes. Cold Iron.
Yes.
Buck.
Yes.
Williams.[1691.54]
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes. All right, call our meeting for the Perry Facilities Authority to order and have a roll call.
Coffee?
Here.
Marshall?
Here.
Davis?
Present.
Cold Iron?
Here.
Buck?
Here.
Here.
Williams? Brown? Brown? Worthy?
I'm here as well, all right. For our consent agenda, we're taking out item B.
Motion to approve consent agenda 1A.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Coffee?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes. Item four, authorize Nate Reed a signatory on all accounts of the city of Perry and for all financial institutions and for all purposes, including but not limited to the signatory on all negotiable instruments, warrants, checks and other evidence of indebtedness. Provide any other additions or substitutions, signatories as deemed necessary.
Submit.
All right.
Coffee?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Yes, new business now adjourned.
Second.
Coffee?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Yes.